Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you. Put you in charge of IT now, too. Awesome. All right. It's six o'clock and we'll go ahead and open up the work session. I'm going to turn everything over to our city manager to get everything started.
So I am quickly turning it over to our development services team. Just ever since we completed that housing assessment and learned about the crisis we have from a housing perspective, we've been putting a lot of work into the portions of that plan that deal with new affordable housing. But there is also other parts to that plan that deal with existing stock. And so this is that other side of the plan that they're going to dig into from getting some technical assistance and help. So with that, I'm turning it over to you guys.
Cool. So just really quick, because I know we didn't give Holly a lot of time for this, so our bad. It's really impressive when you look at our housing action plan and you go through and look at all the goals that we set. And either we have or our partners, you know, we've tackled or made progress on pretty much every single one. It's pretty cool to go through. That it's not just a presentation that's sitting on a shelf. We definitely been getting after it.
And the goals are in three tiers. And so there's like the low hanging fruit, like the easiest things to accomplish, which Deacon did immediately, like UDC updates. And then there was the second hardest, which is like building new housing units, which we managed to accomplish. And I think that they thought it would take longer. And then there's like the third tier of if you're really bored and you have a bunch of super geniuses in your department, you can maybe accomplish this. And this is one of those goals. So I mean, it's almost one of the goals from the housing action plan that like, it's kind of surprising we ever even got to. And because most jurisdictions don't have goals this lofty, much less this complicated. So it's pretty cool.
All right. With that, we'll get it started. So there's a ton of text in this, and I'm sorry, it's a very text heavy document and it's really hard to distill down into pictures. I wish we could. I think the key is to think of what the deliverable from this project and what we're presenting to you is really, it's a roadmap. It's a 50,000 foot view on how we can develop multiple different programs to tackle multiple different, you know, issues that we have with our existing housing stock. And so really with the folks that were hired, I should back up. City received a grant for this from the Division of Housing in February of 2024. And we worked with this pretty hot shot planning and housing group out of New York City as well as community builders who some of you may be familiar with when we did the Building Better Places in February of 2020. They're the ones who hosted that. And I find that as a huge turning point in our organization. So anyways, you know, we spent several months working with this group. They did stakeholder interviews. They looked at a bunch of data and they also helped do a bunch of precedent research where they looked at other communities and figured out how different communities have tackled similar issues. And so really the things that we wanted to focus on are how do we get rundown homes back into the housing stock? How do we take vacant properties and bring new life into them? And then how do we make sure that our housing remains stable and affordable? One of the things that I think is really unique about Alamosa is that we have a really large population of folks who have generational homes and generational property where they have a home because their great grandparents owned that home and they've been in this home. As Alamosa grows, you know, slightly behind the rest of Colorado, but it's still coming, we want to make sure that we don't push folks like that out of our housing stock because they can't afford to live there, but their houses are dilapidating. So that's conceptually a big part of what we're trying to do. So again, this is kind of like a business plan. So we'll go through four of the different, different potential policies to tackle some of our different problems. Okay. So again, you know, big thing, we want to preserve our housing stock. We want to revitalize their neighborhoods and we also certainly want to, you know, have lasting partnerships. One thing I think we've worked really hard on is to continue our relationships with like the Housing Coalition, with CRHDC, and also kind of fostering some better relationships with like the Housing Authority and things of that nature. So kind of with that is thinking about this really complex system and it's really a web. And I think one of the reasons why we felt we needed the technical expertise on this is there are so many pressure points on, and there's not only causes, but different results to some of the common themes that we see in our community. You know, I think about Wilma and Railroad Avenue. That's going the exact opposite direction that we're trying to go to, but we also don't have any tools in place. So, you know, keeping programs like that, you know, designing programs to fit situations like that, because that's not going away, that's going to keep coming. So we want to make sure we're prepared. Okay. So again, I'm somewhat repeating myself here, but we want to find ways to help folks repair and rehabilitate their homes. Now, whether that's something that they can do because they are perhaps able bodied, but maybe don't have the financial mechanisms, or if they don't have an ability to do that physically, how do we help them get that done so that they can remain in their homes? Taking some of these homes that are vacant and owned by some, you know, sibling in California that has just become a real nuisance house, how do we get that back into the housing stock before it becomes something we tear down? And how do we make sure that we're looking at our whole entire neighborhoods to make sure that we're really, we're making positive effects throughout, you know, core places in our community? So we don't want to just kind of piecemeal if we don't have to. We want to focus on really developing kind of that sense of community that can get fragmented when you've got some of these dilapidation issues. So this is essentially how our consultants went through this, you know, developing these different programs, looking at where our housing gaps are, kind of developing the frameworks for these programs, figuring out how the heck are we going to fund these programs? What is, what are the steps that we're going to have to follow to try to roll this out? What are our goals? What are we trying to accomplish, you know, you know, organizationally and community wise? Who are the key players? Who's got resources that they, you know, that they can bring to the table? Are they, you know, our housing partners? Are they faith based institutions? Are they civic institutions? Who can we really rely on to tackle this? Obviously, community outreach. We don't want the news to be about us throwing Wilma out of her house because that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to preserve housing stock and really working on how we message that and make sure that we're meeting folks where they are and understanding some of the nuances of housing dilapidation in our community is obviously a critical point. And then how do we track success? Okay. Hubs. I had to look this up, I'll be honest, because I couldn't remember what hubs stands for. So it's Housing Upgrades to Benefit Seniors. And it's not necessarily just for seniors. It's more thinking about folks who cannot perform their own maintenance on their own homes. You know, the south part of Alamosa is a thing that came into focus during this process because that's where we see homes that have been in the same generation or in the same family for generations where there's probably no mortgage, there's probably no insurance. So, you know, the, you know, month to month payments on this house are slim to none. So, you know, if someone's on a fixed income, what can we do to address some of these critical, critical issues? And so again, this is really targeted for folks with disabilities and seniors. And this is where we would act somewhat as a general contractor to try to package certain common projects. So let's say we say, you know, in this year, we're going to try to target five homes for a roofing, you know, re-roof. So we take, you know, we've got a handful of properties in mind. We do all the bidding and all the contracting. And so that way, you know, we can kind of get some, some scales of efficiency. And, you know, there's also some of the more lower lying fruit like weatherization. Sometimes it's not huge, huge deals that we can rely on folks like the Energy Resource Center, but really thinking about the bigger picture.
I was going to say, this is one of those times where Deacon just kind of like came out swinging and gave this, gave this to the consultants where he said, we have a really successful sidewalk replacement program and it would be great if we could kind of find that model and use it to help people fix their homes. And so not only, the hubs program exists in Baltimore and it's been really successful there, which obviously Baltimore is a very different city on a very different scale. But they did find a way to scale it down to make it more appropriate for Alamosa. And then the general contractor idea really did come from Deacon and it really is something that we think is really achievable. So when they did measurable goals for us, the five to 10 years, five to 10 homes annually, it makes it something that staff can actually get done. So, and then, and then we have a proven track record. I mean, the sidewalk replacement program, there's a commitment from the property owner and you have to apply and it, you know, the, a lot of the frameworks already in place.
And again, a lot of these slides, they're going to have just what our targets are. These are kind of our lofty goals and what we expect the outcome to be. So I do want to kind of just highlight, we've got homes that are dilapidating, that are on code enforcement lists. How do we get them off that where the end result is not demolition, if at all possible? Okay. So this is another big one. Zero percent interest loan program. So this again is more targeted towards folks who are in low and moderate incomes, who may be on a fixed income, again, may not have a mortgage payment or an insurance payment, but you know, may need to replace their plumbing or may need to replace a roof or, you know, there's all sorts of different things. And so the idea with this would be, these are folks who are probably able to kind of, they can get it done, they just don't have the financial resources to get it done. So this would be structuring a program to essentially, you know, loan up to a certain amount. I have my big asterisk there, that 25,000, subject to future discussion. And with a repayment period. Again, the point is we're not trying to make money off of this. It's how do we give people realistic payments and expectations so that they can stay in their homes?
And we'd obviously need seed money to get this started. So, I mean, it's, I don't think that we expect this to come out of the city's general fund, but it would, they also paired us, part of this program was pairing us with a fair number of foundations and grant programs that would help us fund these types of programs so that we'd have seed money to start. And then eventually, because it's a repayment program, there'd be money to make it self-sustaining. And there is a very similar program that is USDA supported that the Housing Coalition does. We just think this is a way to really expand it and make it accessible, especially to, like Deacon said, the people that are kind of on our, on our notice of violation list. You know, this gives them an, instead of just getting a letter from us that says, hey, your roof needs to be replaced, it's your roof needs to be replaced and these are the resources that are available. And we have a little more skin in the game because we're involved in the program. And it, one of the things that we also with the outreach didn't really get into, but we probably should have highlighted is we talked to all of our housing partners and the consultants did, but we also talked to a bunch of local banks, which was another one of those things that was in the housing action plan that was really important and is, you know, a lot of these banks have a lot of investment in our community. And the way that they can give back and the way they can contribute is to try to partner on some of these programs. So.
Yeah. And just from a financial standpoint, if you have a targeted investment in a neighborhood where you have homes that have loans from your bank, all of a sudden you have an appreciation of property values because you're seeing a revitalization of a neighborhood, that's money in the bank, literally. So there are some sort of carrots to kind of leverage in a difference, in addition to just the altruism of our local lending institutions. So the first two, I will say, were the most fleshed out. So those ones essentially in our policy document, we've got essentially all of those eight steps that we talked about. Who's involved? You know, how are we specifically gauging the metrics? You know, pretty much each one of those steps is more fleshed out. The second two are more theoretical and, you know, the third one is more actionable, but still needs a lot of legwork. And then the fourth one is probably actionable, that needs a lot more legwork. So we're kind of getting into the more theoretical realm once we get to this point. So CHAF, that's the Colorado Housing and Finance Association Authority, has a program called First Look. And again, this is where we're looking at vacant and foreclosed properties. This is a huge one where we deal with, again, you know, you've got Rocket Mortgage holds the loan for a home and it's just a number on a book for them, but it has an effect in our community. You know, there's a beautiful home that has been subject to a lot of break-ins and it's had the wire ripped out, but it's a beautiful home. It's got a lemon tree in the, like the sunroom in the front and it's got great bones. It's definitely salvageable. And, you know, trying to lean on those banks, especially like we get to Wells Fargo, I mean, trying to get them to do something is really difficult. So this is kind of looking at some options of getting those sorts of properties from being vacant into the housing stock. There's also kind of a backend element. If the city has, you know, is, has acquired or has a residential lot, how else can we leverage this into a bigger program? Okay. This is, this is the one that is probably the scariest one to talk about to me.
We're sorry we're saying the T A X word. It's technically not four letters, it's only three.
So this was one of the other sort of ideas is that there are just some, some cases where we have folks who do have the means and do have the ability to correct, you know, deficiencies, to bring their houses, you know, into compliance. Sometimes it is these absentee owners. Sometimes it's contractors who just are sitting on houses where they can do it, they just, they have other projects going on and, but again, it has, it has an effect on the neighbors in the neighborhood. So sort of the theoretical idea behind this is that there would have to be a tax that's passed by the voters that would establish essentially a blight tax. And just doing the math at a 25% rate, so essentially for every hundred thousand dollars in property value, that's about a thousand dollars in property taxes that it would add. So if your home is appraised at $200,000 and it's blighted property, that's a, that's an extra $2,000 tax bill every year that goes directly to the city. So again, this is maybe one of the lesser attractive, you know, sort of programs. This is much more of a hammer than it is a stick, but it also has the opportunity to integrate and be seed funding for some of our other programs. So that's one of the reasons why we had this. So there's a lot more legwork to do on this one, especially on the legal side of, you know, how would we define these terms? How would we, you know, measure blightedness and apply it to some, some property? So, and you know, the other thing is blight has, is kind of a loaded term, especially in the terms of development. And, you know, one thing that we, you know, historically have not gone through is a URA or an urban renewal project. Because of that, sort of, we don't want our community to feel like they're living in blight. But on the flip side, if we can say, hey, like your, your property is blighted, your individual property, you're not doing anything, you know, we've tried to play nice, we've sent you nice letters, we've sent you mean letters, we've sent you notices of violation. What else can we do to motivate you to, you know, really start getting this thing moving? So again, this is just more of a theoretical, but this is also the least fleshed out. Okay. So I feel like this is a good sort of, an ultimate slide to just see all the folks and all the resources that we have that are available to us. And I think one of the things when we tried to kind of work on this on our own is there are so many pieces, there's so many players, so many funding sources and partners and how do we, you know, organize all of these moving parts? So that's what this, this plan has really helped us organize. So there's a lot of funding out there. Some of it is more ephemeral, some of it is things that, you know, we will have a essentially a business plan that we can take to, whether it's a philanthropic group or a local bank, that we have an idea, we have, we have a roadmap to say, hey, we want you to invest in this program. This is what we think the outcomes are going to be. A big part of this is, you know, the community engagement piece. Again, we, the message we want to send is not your house is dilapidated, your roof is about to fall down. We don't want to send you a notice of violation and, or, and then demolish your house. We want to find ways to correct it before it gets to the point where your wall's about to fall down. So sort of changing that paradigm, I think, is really important to all of us. And then of course, you know, who's going to be responsible? This is one thing that I think the housing action plan did really well. It said, mobile home park preservation, Housing Coalition, you're really good at this. And what did they do? They preserved our largest mobile home park, which is huge. That's not something that we as, as an organization, as a city, we're going to really tackle. It gets really messy and there's other difficulties with that. So again, you know, knowing the folks who do some of these things well, because we're not lenders, we don't know how the banking industry works and evaluates those things. But, you know, we know a bit about contracting, we know a bit about building, you know, we know about housing and neighborhood connectivity. So what are we bringing to the table? Who else is at the table and what can they bring? So this plan really helped us, you know, understand where those pieces would fall. Okay. So what do we hope to get out of it? You know, really, we want to preserve between five to 10 houses a year. So that's 40 total, that's 1% of our housing stock. Actually, no, that's 0.1%. We want to have vacant properties that we get into the hands of folks who are going to put life in them and, you know, get, get folks housed in them. So, you know, acquiring these vacant properties is another big thing. So five a year is kind of our goal. And then blight reduction. So again, we've got some certain properties that are on our code enforcement list that have been on our list for four, five years. And we're just kind of at a sticking point where, you know, there's no good path forward because we don't have any resources to bring. We only have a hammer and, but we don't want to use the hammer because, you know, we don't want to kick people out of their homes. So when there's a public safety issue though, then we start to have to get involved. But how do we stop it before it gets to that point is really what we want to focus on? So, okay. What are we planning on doing next? Launch pilot version of really the hubs in the zero percent loan program, because those are the most fleshed out. And then, you know, let's figure out a timeline. Okay. You know, who's doing what? When is it going to happen? How are we going to measure success? What are the, the data metrics that we're using? Again, this is where it's kind of like a business plan in my head, where we're trying to appeal to certain funders and folks to invest in this sort of program, get that initial funding and then, you know, start working with the public. Once we have sort of that game plan in place and then, you know, we, we're going to have to reevaluate this as we go, because we definitely don't know what we don't know yet. And as we start really applying some of this program, we're going to find things that we can do better. All right.
All right. Good presentation. Thank you, Deacon and Rachel. So we're going to open up for questions and discussions now. Okay. Counselor Carson, then Counselor Yonah Hill, and then Counselor Cribs.
I didn't bring a pen and I left my gun in the truck, so I'm going to try to wing my questions. I had several, but first one is, first one is, just for clarity, these mics have a 10 foot radius, just. Who holds the mortgage, I guess, once the, once the lien program, once the, once the borrower borrows the money to do the home repair? Who holds that mortgage? It's question one. Question two is, have we seen or can you get us the data on light enforcement as is? Because if all of a sudden we kicked off some program where lighting your house was going to get it taken away and light enforcement went through the roof, the optics of that are horrible. Just saying, because I know property's right now that they're not being enforced, you know what I mean? And so just, we just got to look at that. So keep that in mind, make a note of that. And then thirdly, I guess, is the tax idea a part of a package or is that something you're considering implementation? Or is it like, is this all one deal together? Because I think the tax is something that, yeah, it's really freaky. And again, you know, that whole thing, if you're enforcing blight all of a sudden and you're going to be taxed out of your home at 25 times per rate, it just seems very draconian, like, like you said. So just more info on that and how, how that's going to look, if that's, you know, if it's all or none, because I don't think that the first couple of parts, I think, are doable. They're a little bit new territory and it's a little weird. Because again, we would probably hold some sort of lien in that house immediately, you know what I mean? As a city, we'd have to, correct? And so just curious about that stuff. So just want to elaborate on that more, Dylan. We don't have to talk about that right now, but those are the three things that stuck out to me.
I can answer questions.
You can.
So to kind of go through the order, so yes, there would have to probably be some kind of lien or something to protect the city on that loan type of situation. And we would need to make sure legally that it's the right type of lien as far as the placement of, you know, it, we may not be able to get in front of the original lender, but we would want to make sure it's still collectible because there's different types of liens. So, so yes, there would have to be something like that. No, this isn't like a, a package deal that all four are rolling out. So I think that's why Deacon at the end said the two, which have more legs and are not nearly as controversial. So that whole blight slash tax type of situation is something that needs a lot more thought and is a lot further out if we decide to do it. In regards to getting our hands around current dilapidated projects, probably in December or January, we're going to have a work session because we're triaging certain properties. Because we do have a lot of properties that are vacant, but they're owned by individuals that have the ability to make the changes, but they turn into trap homes, they turn into nuisance issues and they're, they're going to start ending it so they don't need to be demolished, but they're not being kept up and fixed the way they need to be, let alone having people live in it. That's a whole other level, but at least don't be a nuisance and drag your neighborhood down type of thing. But then we've got homes that you have individuals that we call judgment proof. They don't have resources and it's either because of the income or because they're on a disability or, you know, whatever that might be. And so trying to do code enforcement there, realizing they're living in the structure, do they have the capacity to make the changes? So there's a lot of varying degrees, but we, we've got a solid list. But part of what we will come back in December or January is, you know, what level of the code do we need to be enforcing? And I hate to bring this up now because I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, but like from, for example, we draw a hard line, you need to have running water if you're living in a house, because if you don't, that means you're most likely using the restroom outdoor. That's a public nuisance issue type of situation. It gets grayer on if you have electricity and wiring, because it doesn't create the same issue on your neighbors. But anyways, so we need to go through, what are we enforcing to where someone may not be able to live in the house versus not? But then if we can also But then if we can also have some tools to bring to the table to help these people.
Two points to that. One thing to the second part, um, you can probably get a list from public health that has a pretty, you know, a bulleted list of what people need from a health standpoint, and I think you can include something like that from the enforcement standpoint. One suggestion would be, again, from an optics standpoint, cuz this is new and, you know, it's gotta be palatable. You know, we we know right now at this point, WELM is into some sort of debt for the demolition, you know what I mean? So just starting from that point and with these new properties, cuz I I kind of have an idea of maybe some of the ones that are on that list. And so I would think if if we do, if we are starting a program like this, if if it's at all possible to maybe restart that clock at zero and tell them here. From, well, from a, from a options for this program, you couldn't do that?
There's limitations on when you need to do notices for liens, when you need to be filing them in order to start collecting on them, so.
I mean, people that like people that are already in the, in this, on this code enforcement list, you know what I mean, for, they're already, they're already on this list. Can we now submit this information to them and say, look, we're we're giving you a sec- second chance in a sense to 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 start getting your house rehabilitated? We now have these programs.
Once we have the programs up and running, but we probably won't have them up and running. Having them thought through and vetted is step one. And these first two are more vetted than the last two. So the first two, having them more vetted, probably is gonna be mid 20, what year are we in? 2026 type of thing. And then you've gotta have the funding type of thing before we can offer it type of situation. So so this isn't something that's existing that we can offer them right now type of thing.
Yeah, I was a little confused on that. Thank you.
With you guys behind me, I can't see your heads nodding. So is there anything you wanna add to what I've shared?
No, but just the the program that the Housing Coalition runs is almost exactly like the 0% loan loan program, except for that it's funded by the USDA, so the pot of money's relatively small. And there, it's not 0%, so you can qualify for 0%, but there's also interest. So really, it's not necessarily like we, you'd be on a notice of violation list and then we'd like force you into a loan. It really is just, we'd offer a better option than a private bank could offer you.
You guys informed people of this already. You've already sent some of this info out to some of these, haven't you?
No, because none of these programs exist yet. So we'll send information about like dawn, yeah, like the house, yes.
Okay, the Housing Coalition, they can help you buy your house. You're saying as a, from outreach, we've done some of this.
Yes, for the existing resources, we have been providing the existing resources. Yes.
Hey, Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The last two, I would more discussion that's really vet that out. They're they're, I think, kind of radical ideas, but it's a tool in the toolbox. Um, I I appreciate you working on something like this and your team, because I feel like if we would have had this in place over the last year and a half, we could have helped those properties that we had to force people out of their homes and for no fault of their own, just the way it is. But so a question I have, you you talked about the, on hubs. And you and you mentioned, I believe that was the one where you mentioned the sidewalk program that we have. So let me help, let me try to, help me understand. So if, and you you mentioned roofs. So maybe this year our focus is five roofs that are bad. So then we would say to a homeowner, we're the contractor, if if you give, if you put up so much money, we will connect you with a roofer.
And and then hopefully we'd help pay for part of it.
And we would help pay for part of it.
Yeah, so it'd be like a match program, but again, we need like, we need some sort of seat money to get that started. Yeah.
But part of the value then to you as well is I think sometimes people don't know how to do the first step. How do you find the right roofer that's gonna do a good job at a reasonable price and finish the job? Like you hear those horror stories of you paying something and they don't finish. And so it kind of also helps for those people who might be feeling overloaded and don't feel like they have the capacity to even take that.
Well, especially with roofers in the valley, there's not many of them, and the and the good ones that we do have are booked crazy, so we're getting people out of Pablo and Durango and that who charge a ton. Um, so I I really like that, that program, and I would like to explore it even more. And then a question I had on blight, well, just, I don't know about blight, but just and Mr. Carson mentioned it a little bit too, like, there are already rules on the books. Does blight include overgrown front yards and weeds all over the place?
It's not something that we enforce in our department. So it's enforced by PD and it falls under different state statutes. So the way that PD manages that is is kind of different. It, the, first of all, the fines, like if we go in and do the work ourselves as the city, like overgrown weeds, the city can get reimbursed for the cost. So it's a relatively easy process. When you're talking about home renovations, it's a really slippery slope when we talk about like, oh, this person needs their electrical upgraded cuz it's dangerous or their plumbing doesn't work. Like, do we want to be the general contract? Like, how do we fix those? Those are almost unfixable problems from the building department's perspective. And the building code, like the International Property Maintenance Code is pretty clear about what you need just for basic life safety. And so like, it's like running water and heat and, you know, functional electricity, like it's, they're pretty basic things. And not creating a public health hazard by like not having sanitary plumbing. And so like, how do we address some of those things when you're talking about people on fixed incomes or you're talking about people with physical limitations? But at the same time, like, we can't necessarily do the work ourselves per se, you know? So um.
Blight is a, is a term that people oftentimes bring their own perceptions to. So for some, they might think a really overgrown yard is starting to lead towards blight. I think more in the middle is maybe there's some of the yard issues, but you're starting to see some of the structural stuff too. So some, something may be a little more substantial when, is when we would start using the term blight. But you'll have plenty of people in the community who who will say, having that very overgrown for a lot of different reasons. You get rodents living in there and weeds and noxious weeds and, you know, there's a lot that comes with it. So it's not to minimize it. But when you start throwing the word blight around, it usually starts getting closer to be related to the structure as well type of thing.
Yeah, and and that's what our department means, like, that's all. Like, we, weeds are all well and good, but there's actually pretty good systems in place that the city has to address those.
And so my final comment is I just also appreciate on this first slide, you said you would focus on the south side first. So I I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Yonvi Hill. We have Counselor Krebs, Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as an overall view, what I appreciate about this is trying to look ahead as programs take effect and then ripples out. Is that what I would like to hope to see as a possible positive from it is that the individuals that do have um dilapidated homes, it won't be this years-long process of touching base with them and then waiting and then touching base with them and then waiting. It will be a, a more of a collaborative process and finding out what their needs are and as, as Deacon mentioned, meeting them where they're at with resources. And so um, that's one of the the side effects I'm I'm hoping to look forward to, like five years from now, looking back, that we were able to help people get out of this cycle of years-long dilapidation. I do have a question, and I'm positive you covered it, but I was trying to be super focused on it. You did a great job explaining the rehabilitation part of it. And I know you probably touched briefly on the property acquisition piece, but if you could just elevator pitch me that one more time in the sense of, is that where you're connecting people with vacant properties to say, hey, this is available and using the resources that the city has? It's not the city actually purchasing vacant properties. We're not getting into the selling vacant properties business.
Correct on most of that, and and I'll happily elaborate. I do think that there could be times where we become, we possess properties. But the last thing, we don't wanna be landlords, we don't wanna be property owners. So, you know, finding ways to offload those properties to responsible organizations, like Trinidad State College has an amazing program where they train, um, you know, they have a, it's like a seven or eight-week training program where they have to own a home and they they have this really intensive construction certification course. And they go through a home and they they renovate it essentially as the class. And then TSC sells that house and uses it to continue to fund their program. We really struggled for the last few years trying to help them, so they started this program, which was actually funded by the Attorney General's Office to uh to find places where they could start an Alamosa, but we didn't have properties that that were cheap enough, frankly, to to make it work for them. And so I I do think there might be an intermediate step and and one other component to, especially these first two programs, is that banks can't play the long game. The city can play the long game. Like, if hypothetically, somebody doesn't meet their 10-year obligation, we don't wanna take them and throw them on the street. That's completely counterproductive to what we're trying to do. There's gotta be some enforcement mechanisms, but we're not trying to recoup that cost in the same way that a private entity is going to. Did I answer your questions?
You did. Thank you.
Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Carson.
So I think all this is great. I think, and I'm sure you've thought this too, but sometimes the challenge in where the cost goes up, and I know Housing Coalition runs into this and, but so you'll, you'll have some, um, let's say you say, okay, I need some new electrical outlets or I need a new plumbing. Well, the minute that electrician goes in there and opens up, and if it's knob and tube or things, it's then a whole rewire, not just fixing or the plumbing when they go in and all of a sudden it's not just fixing that one thing. It really is that from a um from being, uh, what do you call it? But I, where it's certified, you know, where they say, okay, so it's like their their hands are tied, they can't do those things. And then also going in and obviously if the foundation is bad or stuff like that. So I think what I like is it sounds like you're taking into account that some of these things could get a little more expensive, whereas if you say it's a limited amount of money, it can't really do what it needs to do. So my question is, is there times though when those things start adding up? Is it, do you find that it is still beneficial to go in and get all of those things done versus tearing it down and rebuilding and starting from? And I'm just curious.
There's pretty clear criteria in the building code about whether or not something's structurally sound or not. So I don't think even the the beautiful blue house with the lemon tree that he was talking about, structurally sound, just has no plumbing anymore or or wiring. And so it's fixable. And we don't, I don't, we never wanna tear down houses that are structurally sound. Even if they have damaged foundations, like those are still houses that are perfectly livable. Um, and they're not in any danger of collapse. I think that one of the things that Deacon said well and that we talked about in the process is that because we are you know, we work within the building industry, we have a building professional, we have a building inspector, doing things like helping homeowners navigate getting building inspections and we're getting cost estimates that are realistic before we go any further, before we go into the loan process, is also something we can help them do. Like, I I, there's so many times with the code enforcement process where you tell people they need to reach out, and even if you give them a list of local roofers, they don't know where to start, they don't know who's honest, they don't know if the numbers are reasonable. And that's the way that, it's something that's really radical. I mean, that was a good word that Counselor B Hill used. It's a radical thing for a city to do, but it's in our Housing Action Plan is, you know, there's not enough local capacity to absorb some of this. You can play the long game because you're the government and you have the in-house expertise to do some of that. So how do you help these people get realistic cost estimates? Find out what they really need done before they go to get a loan and then make the loan affordable for them so that they can make the changes they need to fix and save the house. We also just love historic houses in my department because we're also the Historic Preservation Officers. And so we, we always wanna salvage houses that are like vaguely unsalvageable, as long as they're structurally sound.
So my question is then, in looking at your first two options, so it looked like it was a 10-year loan?
Um, I think that's what they're recommending, but the housing authority, they go up to 30.
Right.
Yeah, or Housing Coalition, sorry. Yeah.
And so that was where I was gonna go, is a 10-year loan, and I guess I was doing the long one. If you get into all of that stuff needing to be done, which most of these houses need more, they need a roof, they need all of that, that gets into a, for a 10-year loan, a pretty hefty payment. And I just didn't know if that was a concern or thought through that.
I think that we probably have to piecemeal things, and I think we'd have to be realistic about what we can achieve. That is why bankers were involved in the process. So the outreach, we we probably could have done more justice to the outreach, and that's why community builders were involved, because they're the experts in outreach. So contractors were involved in that outreach and were interviewed one-on-one. So we're bank, like, almost, there was representative from every bank in town. And so how to make some of that sustainable, because we don't, you know, we're not bankers and we obviously can't have people, you know, paying $1,000 a month on a, you know, on a loan. So some of those things do have to be flushed out, like, the bones of this are good, but the way they pitched it at the end was really just like, this is a packaged program for you to take to your local banks or to local foundations to have them help fund. And so maybe it's something where it's subsidized for a number of years, like, we're not really totally sure how that'll work.
Or we, good foundation, so I, sorry.
We also wanted to make sure that we're not taking businesses away from the bank too. So it's not something for every income that we're suddenly offering 0% loans, cuz I think, you know, that doesn't match up with what our lending institutions need either.
There's one, I'm sorry, there's one word that Heather used earlier that I think is really crucial, and it's it's triage. A lot of this is, you know, one reason why we start with roofs is if you don't have a good roof, everything else is gonna fail soon thereafter. So yeah, maybe your electricity is is in bad shape, but if we can get that roof replaced, then we can at least buy some time to, you know, get this home at least not going in the the continual dilapidating direction.
I feel like that came from a councilperson, the save the roof, save the home. That wasn't a, it was Jamie, yeah.
So if you don't mind, just one more. So you're saying then, so if, let's say you're like, hey, these five houses, new roof, and they get the loan for the roof, then a year or two later, if there's something else, or however long it takes, so they can kind of do supplemental or piecemeal these loans to do it, they don't have to do it all at once? I like that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course.
I was just gonna kind of ask down the road of what Liz was saying, this would expedite or, cuz one of the biggest complaints I hear out in our community when they're building is the uh rigidity or strictness of the code for, of the building code now, how it's changed. This would, of course, help them through that process now, because you're gonna be giving them the right people that know the right things. So that's just what I was curious about, if it would help expedite that. And then you're gonna help like some of these people who already don't have these resources, you're gonna walk them kind of in a consultation way almost through who they're gonna deal with. So um, I think he meant, and I'm not speaking for him, but I think he meant the taxation was kind of radical. I don't, the plan itself, I don't know that it's so radical, the two first options. Uh, I just think they're more indicative of what we do here. You know, he said, I wish we would have had this in place. I I agree with him 1,000%. I just think that I've never really heard of a lot of cities doing this. This is pretty new, and again, we're running ahead of that curve. I'm not uh, not in any way tooting our horn, cuz this is a horrible scenario to even have to be in, I think. But the fact that we're getting ahead of it is good, and so kudos to you guys. When you first started, I started freaking out inside and getting a lot of anxiety about it, but you calmed me down because there's some pretty valuable stuff in there, so I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you very much.
We meant radical good.
No, I just meant ra, no, I didn't mean radical, but 25 for times tax, I think is radical bad.
The first two are radical good.
Yeah, the first two are pretty radical good, you're right.
Okay, uh, we'll go ahead. I'm just gonna make a real quick comment, then we'll open it up to the public for comments since we're pressing it for time. Great, great job, great ideas. I really appreciate it. I've seen his actually work in Texas in a community I grew up in as a kid. Um, and the city went in and helped out a lot of the elderly people that were like my parents' age, uh, that that were on fixed incomes, and it really kept the community uh beautiful. Uh, so I think you all are headed in the right direction. Good job. So now we're going to open up the public comment portion of this work session. For those who are here who would like to make any comments or have any uh comments, we do not go back and forth during this time, but you can make your comments and then maybe our city manager or staff will respond shortly with with answers, okay? So if we have anyone here right now have any comments regarding this work session, now is the time to come up to the podium. You only have three minutes, uh, which we will clock it. If you're here for the 7 o'clock uh city council meeting, uh, that starts at 7:00. Okay, so does anyone have any comments or wanna come up to the mic right now? State your name. And we have a clock that is be right, oh, you're doing the clock, okay. Go ahead.
Just three brief comments. The first and foremost, eh, from my understanding on option number four, this isn't a this isn't a first intention, right? This is a back pocket. We've tried everything else. And then we use the 25 times tax as the hammer, as you said, in order to make sure that these people comply with the city standards that we have, correct?
Or, or we remember, maybe never implement.
This is, this is not a, this is not.
Forgive me, I, I ended with a question. I apologize. Second commentary that I, I wanted to address with income-based re, uh, with income-based qualification, are we going to use a set number or are we going to use a poverty standard and then a percentage thereof for qualification? I do apologize that both of mine are questions. I just think about this stuff and I want to know the answers. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who have any other comments before I go to the Zoom participants? And then we'll have staff follow up with, uh, any responses to any questions been asked. No one else is in the audience. So now I'll open up the Zoom. Uh, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen uh, to be recognized. And we will give you an opportunity to participate, uh, in this open comment, citizen comment section. I don't see any hands raised. So we'll go ahead and close the, uh, comment section and follow up with staff, uh, for a follow-up.
So, so first, we're not even talking about rolling out the, the tax, um, as a penalty thing, even as right away type of situation. And if we ever did something like that, it then would be the last resort type of situation. And in regards to how are we gonna define the qualifying income, um, that hasn't been flushed out yet.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and thank you staff again for all the work you put into it and looking forward to us working together as a team. We're gonna go ahead and close this, uh, work session and, uh, get.